I'd like to call the council meeting of Monday, October 18th, to order. If I can have our Assistant City Clerk call the role.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Busque. Mayor, we have a quorum.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, moving on to agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. At this time, I'd like to open comments from the public for our agenda items. Only anyone wishing to speak on any agenda items, feel free to come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing no one, moving on to our special business. Tonight, we have a presentation for fire rescue. We have Chief Brian Fuller, who's going to be presenting.
Test, can you hear me? Good. Thank you, Mayor Flores, Deputy Mayor Tharp, City Council, City Manager McHugh, and guests. Thanks for being here this evening. We have some exciting announcements to make this evening. We've had some recent promotions in the fire rescue service at Green Acres. And I'm going to call some gentlemen up here in the order in which they were promoted, or will be promoted, and talk a little bit about each one of these gentlemen. But it's an exciting time to be here with you tonight and announce these promotions. The first person I'm going to call up is now Assistant Chief Phil Conns. If Phil could come up here with me. Sir. Chief Conns began his career as an firefighter/EMT in Green Acres in October of 2004. He was promoted to a firefighter/paramedic in November of 2005. After spending about 10 years honing his profession, he became a fire rescue captain in Green Acres in February of 2015. After that, with the addition of the fire rescue battalion chief position, he was promoted to one of our first battalion chiefs positions in June of 2018. And then became the acting assistant fire chief when I was promoted to fire chief. And there became a vacancy in there. He was in the acting role for quite a while and was officially promoted to assistant fire chief for the Green Acres Fire Rescue on August 26th of 2021. He has a bachelor's degree in fire administration for Columbia Southern University, associates of, two associate's degrees, one in EMS and one in fire. He's a certified fire officer one and a current EMS instructor in the local training institutions. In 2016, he earned a distinguished service award by the Palm Beach County EMS Providers Association. I'd like to congratulate Assistant Chief Conns. Chief Conns is accompanied tonight by his wife Jennifer and his son Matthew. And they're going to come up and perform the penning ceremony. Okay. The next gentleman I'd like to recognize is Stephen Papia. Captain Papia, right now? As young as he looks, Captain Papia, at this time, was a hospital corpsman in 1988 to 1992 in the United States Navy. He became a paramedic at Orlando Regional Medical Center back in 92 to 96. And then worked for Life Fleet Atlantic American Medical Response Ambulance Company from 96 to 2002. He was first hired at Green Acres as a paramedic in October of 2002. He spent years as a paramedic, a field training officer, a driver engineer, and then made captain, a fire rescue captain, at Green Acres Fire Rescue in 2018. He's currently a captain for the next three days. And then on October 21st of this year, he will be officially promoted to battalion chief. He holds a Bachelor's of Science in Business Management for the University of Central Florida. And he's accompanied tonight by his wife Amy, who was a Booker Towe police officer, right? His daughter Lily, and then son Sammy, and mother, brother, and sister. And I believe the brother is in the service as well at one of the local agencies, the sheriff's office, maybe. No, that's your nephew. Okay, sorry. Congratulations. And if I didn't say it, I don't know, I'm not sure if I did, he's going to be promoted to battalion chief on October 21st. Okay. And firefighter/paramedic Brady. Brian Brady. Brian Brady started as a firefighter/EMT at the city of Green Acres in 2006. He was promoted to driver engineer in 2012. He became a state certified paramedic and a paramedic with Green Acres in 2015. He's been a field training officer since 2018 and currently still holds that position. He's also a certified, or a step-up captain in our agency, able to work as a captain and fill in when those positions are needed. He served on the pension board as a secretary since 2012. He's a very active instructor for our Recruit Academy. He holds an associate's degree in nursing and is nearing the completion of a bachelor's degree in nursing. And he will be promoted to the rank of fire rescue captain on October 21 of 2021. Congratulations, Captain Brady. He's accompanied this evening by Tiffany, Nora, Liam, Madison, and his father Matthew, who will be putting the pin on him, or his badge. Not that way.
Any comments from the council? Anybody want to? Well, to the three of you, thank you so much for your dedicated service to the city of Green Acres. You know, from one person who's served, and the council here who continues to serve this residence, we appreciate your sacrifice, the hours, the minutes that you've put into the job. It's truly rewarding to see you guys today being pinned, and being pinned by your family members. Because they, they've been there side by side. They know what it takes to do what you guys do. And it's great that your family and your children are here to witness you guys, you know, in such a great achievement. So, to all three of you, congratulations. And for the rest of you, I know there's a lot of firefighters here, way to go. That's a way to back up your buddy. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. All right, with that being said, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to our regular agenda, there's none, no items tonight, however, we do have a discussion item tonight. City Manager Andrew McHugh is going to be discussing City Hall exterior updates.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I am going to have Ms. Hernandez come up here with me. Her effort on all of this has not gone unnoticed for sure. So, so, okay, thank you very much. I know we've had some conversation about, just with respect to the work that was, or some of the items that we had in our capital improvement program that the council had approved as part of the fiscal year '22 budget. We were looking at doing some upgrades to the front of City Hall as well. I believe 2005, somewhere in that timeframe, was when the building, the original concepts were done for this building. So, we felt it was some time to, the time had come to spruce it up a little bit. So, I know, Mayor, you had asked for, to see, you know, what the options were. We had a group of employees that were led by Ms. Hernandez. She really did spearhead the whole, the whole conversation and helped with coming up with ideas. And she led the group to come up with some ideas that we're going to share with you this evening and get your feedback on, so hopefully we can continue to keep the process moving forward. We're looking forward to seeing everything when it's all said and done. I know that you have seen that some of the lower, the lower things in front of City Hall have been removed. Some trees are going to be going in, some hedging was going in today. So, it's really going to look great when it's all said and done. So, with that, wanted to talk a little bit about the building itself and some of the concepts that we're actually looking at with, for the building. I'm just going to move on. I'm going to go right to the first slide. Let's see, slideshow, from the beginning. Okay. There we go. Okay, so, first slide, you're going to see a few different things. You're going to see the original concept, which was done in 2005. And that's the original building that you see now. And then you're going to see a couple of options that were looked at and discussed as part of the group. Really, a lot of these improvements would be just repainting. It's amazing what a coat of paint can do. And there's repainting of the roof, the exterior walls, adding accent shutters, as you'll see on the front of the building, some stone columns, just wrapping it. So, it's not like putting in new stone columns. It's amazing what they can do today. And you can wrap the columns to be able to get that effect on that. And then also some landscaping upgrades. So, those two options are the options that, you know, there were different variations, things like that, but those were the options that seemed to have the most interest by the committee and everyone that took a look at it. So, going on to the next slide, you'll see that, you know, again, there's going to be the stone columns put in. There will be some slight stucco detailing. Again, this is not something that's overly involved. There is already stucco on those outside pillars on the outside of the building. It just gives a little bit of depth and dimension to the slight stucco, to the stucco. So, doing some slight detailing there will provide that dimension in that area so that it just doesn't look flat. In the option number one, the top one, that's going with more, I guess both are kind of earth tones, but maybe a little bit more, you know, in the amber oranges. The stone columns, again, will match that. The shutters are a darker shutter, wherein the option number two, it does have the detail. The stonework is still there. The shutters are green in the option two, and the building is a little bit lighter. So, that's what we were looking at for the two options, for the colors that, you know, after having a lot of discussion, going and looking at other municipal complexes, other city halls, to see what they had, what they were doing, some of the new builds from different city halls and different municipalities. This is what we came back with and thought that it's an opportunity to really do some upgrades to the building without, one, spending a lot of money, and really it being, you know, a major renovation or major overhaul. So, I thought maybe we could stop there and get some thoughts, because the other slides are just some other areas. But these are really the two concepts that we were looking at.
Any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Pierce, Councilmember Dugo.
Number one? We thought they both, you know, that they both were, and I think the one thing that everyone also needs to understand is these colors that are here potentially might not be the colors that, they don't translate as well, just as though the colors that printed here don't look like the colors that are there. But it just gives an idea of what the concept is and what we're trying to go towards and move towards.
Another thing, could I just share with you, is that, you're going to, are you, are you saying the roof's going to be black?
The roof is going to be a, it's like a bronze, a very dark brown. It's like a very, very dark brown.
Just remember heat.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. We, yeah. And we did look at some of the other, some of the other municipalities, and particularly Boynton Beach, they just built a brand-new city hall. They have the dark accents. The nice thing is, is that really, these dark, the roof itself is still not going to be dark. You'll see on the next slide, this is really just the accents that you can see from the front of the building. We're not painting the roof dark.
Are you going to paint the roof or put a brand-new roof on?
No, this is actually being done with paint. You can actually do this with paint, similar to what River Bridge just recently did with changing the color of their roof from one color to another. It was done with paint.
Can you just write this down? It's direct-to-metal paint? It's imperative with metal.
Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. We will be sure that whatever process, you know, however, you know, the vendors, that selection process, we'll be sure that they are very skilled in doing that type of work.
Councilmember Dugo?
Well, both of these are just amazing compared to, you know, we're certainly dated here. I prefer the earth colors because just the thought of green shutters, I just, I love the earth colors. Both are just beautiful, though.
Councilmember Noble?
Can you go to the next slide? With the, with the stone showing, stone columns? I like number one because the light color brings the building out so that you can see it better. But I do not like the stone columns. And the reason I say that is, they never can be repainted. They would have to be steam washed in the future. And they may get to look dirty. So, I'm not particularly fond of the stone columns. I would see something a little bit more simpler.
We did take that into account, the location of those columns. We felt that they would be pretty low maintenance. The ones that you're seeing in front of the building, those are under the overhangs, so that would really minimize any, you know, exposure to elements, things like that. Same thing on the sides. We did, it was taken into consideration, but the thought process was, was that using that kind of color scheme, it's going to really, it's going to mask some of the things that you're talking about as far as the look, you know, and it's going to, to keep it, it'll keep looking nice, we felt that, you know, using that color scheme that, with the browns and those type of earth tones.
Deputy Mayor Tharp?
I actually like number two better, just for the record. I mean, I think it's just a little bit more contemporary. I think both designs are great. So, just, you know, personal opinion, I'm a fan of number, option number two.
Councilmember Busque?
I like option number one. I think it stands out more. And, yes, I like that one much better. Okay. All righty.
I think both options look nice. The first one looks like John I. Leonard colors. So, we may get students showing up here, going to school.
They can volunteer.
So, I like, I like the second one. I like the neutral colors. It looks nice. I think either way, we're leaving this in capable hands. My question is, how much are we, what's the budget on this? What are we looking at right now?
We're actually getting quotes right now on a lot of the work. I mean, we have a wish list, so there might be some things that might need to wait a little bit. We did get a preliminary quote back of about $30,000 to paint the building. Now, the stucco, the shutters, the, the stone, we're still waiting on a quote, but that might be, you know, a little over 100.
So, we're saying about 100?
Aside from, yeah, so maybe 150, 170 range. But we are getting different quotes from the vendors. And contractors, and obviously, their opinions on a lot of these things, the different colors, the shades, the type of paint, all of that comes into play as well.
And what is the timeline? What are we looking at? This is next six months, a year?
I'm hoping by February, before the arts event. But, right now, the way that things are, you can't really tell. I mean, a lot of the supplies have been delayed. We met with one contractor who even explained to us, I, he gets his paint from Sherwin-Williams, and he might not be able to get it all at once. So, rather than bring us bits and pieces, I'd rather have all the paint here and make sure that the entire building is going to be the same shade. So, timeline, I really, like the vendors have told us and the contractors, I really can't pinpoint it right now because of the situation with the shipment, with getting workers out here, with all of that.
And we already put this in the budget, correct?
This, this goes, it's part of, it was something that we were able to incorporate within the CIPs that, in doing the back of the building, we actually, and I was going to bring up under my report, we did apply for a solid waste grant for beautification. We got that grant, so that was something that we didn't anticipate. There are some other grants that we're looking at to be able to offset some of the other costs, which will give us the ability to stay within that range and what we put in the budget.
Excellent.
Correct.
Good question. Is there an emergency, like, call box in this, in this park?
I don't think that, you mean a separate freestanding one?
Just a free, separate?
I don't believe that there is an emergency call box. I don't believe that there's a freestanding call box here in the complex.
Like an emergency call box?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know what you mean. I don't believe we have one. No, we can look into that.
Do we have any of those at any of the parks?
I don't know if we have one at Community Park, or we have them at Freedom. I don't know. I'll have to look into that. I don't know.
I would like us, maybe not for this budget year, but maybe we can look into that for safety purposes.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have for this piece. It looks nice, very nice. Good job.
Okay. And then just a couple of more. The next one, this was something that we had already discussed incorporating the back pathway along the front pathway, and it'll meander around the front of the building to connect the back with the front. That was something that we talked about. If you actually put your sneakers on and go, you can actually walk through where this path is going to go around the building. The flags are already up and shows it meandering through. So, that's something that's being worked on. And then the last thing, Mayor, you had brought up the bike racks in front of the building, or you had brought up art and things like that. One of the things that I don't know, you know, I think some feedback from the council on whether or not you would want to maintain those bike racks in front of the building. We are going to look to incorporate art as part of it in the future. But is there any interest in us exploring the opportunity to be able to see if we can find something that looks more like art to replace the bike racks in front of the building? Any thoughts on that?
I mean, I would like art, whether it's a bike rack or a squirrel.
I think that is a bike rack. I actually think that is a bike rack. The squirrel is a bike rack.
It is?
Yes, it is. It's a bike rack. That it is.
I like the squirrel.
So, just some thoughts. I mean, we can come back with those, we can come back with those things later, but, you know, if we can incorporate some art, you know, not just have your standard bike rack, we're able to incorporate some art in those areas. We'd like to be able to do that, if everybody's okay, with just kind of having the flexibility to be able to do something like that.
I like the squirrel. I like the one above. I like the leaves. I mean, I'm open. I mean, I'm, the council can provide their input as well. So, is there any, any other council members want to show them in? Councilmember Dugo?
I like the squirrel.
I mean, we got to embrace it, right?
Absolutely, we do. We have to embrace it. I agree 100%. It's who we are. Any other thoughts, any other comments? We just wanted to make sure that we shared this with everyone so that you know what we're, we're working towards and get your thoughts and buy-in on what we're looking at.
Deputy Mayor Tharp?
I love the idea of incorporating the art. I think it's, it adds a little bit of character and with the functionality, so.
And I think as time goes on, we'll be able to add more art around the building. And, you know, again, we're looking at doing something where there's lighting behind, on the pathway, behind solar lighting, so gives us more ability to be able to just be in the area and see what's, what's happening here at City Hall. Okay. Anything else?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Thank you very much, Eileen.
Beautiful. Great job, ladies.
All right. At this point in time, we're going to move on to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, moving on to our city manager's report. City Manager McHugh?
Thank you. A few things tonight, as we talked about just a minute or so ago, the Public Works Department did put in for a solid waste authority beautification grant. And last week, we were awarded one of their grants, so we were pretty excited about that. That just helps in offsetting some of the costs that we're going to have here. Another thing that has come up recently, there's been lots of discussion on, is waste management, their performance, how they're doing, you know, how we can improve in certain areas. We've been having meetings with waste management. We met with them at some point in September, I believe it was. We discussed what was going on in August and some of the complaints and all of the information that we had received at that point. And we, we were very clear in that there needed to be some improvements. So, we did meet with them on Friday. We have seen significant improvements in response, pickup, communication, all of those areas. We stress that we need to continue to see improvement, and, and we're hopeful that we're going to get where we need to get with that. They are going to be making some changes to some of the recycling pickup, just for efficiencies purposes. We will be, they will be posting notices by the containers to let people know what is happening. We will make sure that we're providing communication to any of you that are impacted within your district so that you can also let your communities know as well. But the communication has improved, the response has improved. that, put that out there, so this month being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it will be this Wednesday, six-thirty to eight PM, again, the topic is domestic violence focusing on teen dating violence, students do get community service hours for attending, so we're hoping that that encourages them to attend, but we did have a lot of students that attended last month, and it was a great conversation, so wanted to put that out, and that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, are there any comments or questions from the council? Council member Dugo.
I have a question on the recyclables, are they changing curbside pickup or dumpster?
Just dumpster.
Okay, thank you.
Just looking at dumpster.
That makes my email blast a little easier in my community.
Yes, just dumpster, just dumpster pickup, and we'll be sure to make sure that those that are going to be impacted are communicated with, so that everyone is on the same page, before anything actually changes and happens.
Thank you, that's my only question, thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, moving on to the city attorney's report, city attorney?
Thank you, I don't have a report tonight.
Thank you, moving on to the mayor and city council report, I'm going to start to my right, deputy mayor Tharp.
I have a report.
Council member Noble?
No report.
Council member Dugo?
I, I don't have a report, but I have a comment, is this?
Your turn.
Help me, I know at the last meeting that I wasn't available, that we approved the capital improvement program, and, and I have no objection to that, but I was wondering if we could discuss, or maybe put it on the next agenda, again, because I missed it, the criteria that we're using for that program?
You're referring to the property improvement program?
Thank you, thank you.
So, I'm going to defer to our, our city attorney here, in order for us to bring an item up, again, for discussion or for vote, what would be required according to, to bylaws, I guess?
So, I think that under Robert's rules of order is probably what you're talking about, because I don't believe your rules get into this situation, is a motion for reconsideration, and with a motion for reconsideration, there has to be some new evidence that's brought to light, and someone from the prevailing side of the motion has to make the motion for reconsideration, now that's a motion for reconsideration.
Which I'm not.
Right, so if it's just a matter of, at the next meeting, having a discussion on your agenda to discuss the criteria that was approved at a previous meeting, that's just a discussion, it's not governed by Robert's rules of order.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, let's add it to the next council meeting. Anything else, councilor Dugo?
Oh, no, thank you.
Council member Pierce?
Nothing.
Council member Busque?
Nothing, thank you.
And for, I don't have anything for my report, so.
Okay, oh, next meeting, November first, yes, November first, at this point right now, we don't really have anything for the second meeting in November, but it's very possible that we may be asking to cancel that second meeting in November, so we'll just keep everybody posted.
Excellent, are we, are we doing the Thanksgiving dinner?
No, the, no, the Thanksgiving, no, we're not doing that this year.
Are we giving away any food, are we doing anything?
I haven't heard that there's been anything that was planned for any giveaways or anything like that, I don't believe so at this point, we can touch base with Feeding South Florida, but I haven't heard anything.
And this Friday, we're still having the?
Yes, our employee recognition luncheon, correct.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, meeting's adjourned.